Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's April 20th, 2020, and this is the Clovis City Council Meeting. Given the current shelter-in-place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city has implemented the following changes to participate in and public comment for all council meetings until notified otherwise. The Clovis Council chambers will not be open to the public. Any member of the city council may participate from a remote location by teleconference. This meeting will be webcast and accessible at the web address noted on the screen. Written comments. Members of the public are encouraged to submit written comments at the web address listed up to three hours before the meeting. You will be prompted to provide a list of items that are here. Please separate, please submit a separate email for each item you are commenting on. Please specify if you would like to have your written comment read into the record. If so, your item will be read into the record during the public comment portion when it is heard. A portion of your comment extending past three minutes may not be read aloud into the record due to time restrictions, but it will be part of the record proceedings. Please be aware that any public comments received that do not specify a particular agenda item will be read aloud during the general public comment portion of the agenda. While the entirety of the written comment will be provided to the city council and will be included in the meeting record, staff will only read as much of the comment as allowed within a three-minute period. Any specific points to comment or desires to be read into the record should be included at the beginning of their written comment. If a written comment is received after 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, efforts would make to read the comment into the record. However, staff cannot guarantee that written comments after 3:00 p.m. will be read. Verbal comments. If you wish to speak to the council on an item by telephone, you may contact the city clerk at (559) 324-2060 no later than 3:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. You will be asked to provide a phone number with, a phone number to call you during the meeting. You also will be asked your name so that you can be called when it is your turn to speak. You will be called during the comment section of the agenda item on which you wish to speak. You may be put on hold until your name is called by the clerk. You will be able to speak for three minutes, up to three minutes to the council. Please note that if you request a verbal comment, any written comments by the same person will not be read into the record. I will call the meeting to order, and if Councilmember Ashbeck could lead us in the flag salute, please.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, and routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Lynn. If the clerk will call roll, please.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Wanachua?
Here.
Councilmember Whalen?
Here.
Mayor Besseger?
Here.
Item number one is consider approval of a revised city council meeting protocol imposed during COVID-19 state of emergency. Staff is city clerk John Holt. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started, I want to point out you have two things in front of you right now. You've got the agenda itself, which has the current protocol, and then you've got a document labeled "proposed 420," and it's what I'm proposing this evening. The current protocol was approved by city council on March 30th. The audio and the PowerPoint portion of it can be viewed via the city website. Written comments could be emailed in. Verbal comments can be made available to the public through WebEx, and the council chamber has not been open to the public. A resident would be able to view the PowerPoint presentation and be able to hear the audio. Some minor changes that we're proposing is going to be a hard copy of the written public comment would be provided to city council on the day as appropriately labeled, if received by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. An example is public comment that is in front of you with yellow highlighting noting an April 20th public comment. If a member wished to speak verbally to city council, they could contact staff before the meeting, and we would get them set up to be able to speak, and when their item came up, we would unmute the microphone at the appropriate time. And I'd also like to point out that we're testing the streaming technology to see if we can stream video, and I'll be asking for approval for council this evening to get in with our May 4 meeting. Part of the discussion that took place last week was going to be, should we open these meetings up to the public? I did a query on Tuesday after the meeting and reached out to the other cities. I received 120 responses, of which I found 13 are open to the public. If the council direction is to open up to the public, I'd recommend that we limited it to the 18 seats I have identified in the audience just to kind of give you the visual. We would put the podium back in place, possibly physically clean the microphone after each speaker. We would still have remote access for anybody that wanted to participate either in a written or verbal, similar to what we have now. So really, we're learning as we go on this. We can probably manage the social distancing. So this evening, what I'm looking for is for the city council to approve the revised meeting protocol. Two, is going to be provide staff direction on either opening the chambers to the public or keeping them closed. And finally, authorize staff to begin live streaming video of the council meetings beginning with the May 4 meeting, and I add it if we can. There's a couple things we're still working on and can't perfect it, but we're moving in that direction. So that if I got approval from all of this tonight, the May 4 meeting would be video streamed. And the way you would think about it, that WebEx that I showed you a minute ago, you'd have the ability, a resident would have to go in and have the ability to either view the PowerPoint presentation, view the video. It's probably going to be a single still camera located in the rear of the council chamber that's pretty much focusing up front here. You have that view, or you could do the PowerPoint presentation, or you could do both, side by side, similar to a Zoom that you guys have worked in, but it would be able to do it. So at this point, I'm looking for, the staff's report is complete, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for John?
John, I appreciate the revision on some of the, a lot of the wording has shortened and then taken out all those limitations. I think that is very citizen-friendly. So with regards to the streaming video, it's a kind of like a wide pan, and then it would just kind of stay there without
Correct.
focusing on whoever is speaking then, correct?
Correct. We're working with CMAC to assist us with this, and initially, my recommendation was we just have a single still camera that would catch the dais. The technology is there now, so you could actually, to the point of having somebody actually man it so that they could focus on a single council member, whatever we wanted to do. And I realistically, I want to take baby steps on this and see how it goes, and just start off with a single camera.
Okay. Well, the video, will it have the ability to have type messages on the bottom or no? But this will still stay on a separate screen and the video be itself, and then if it was the mayor speaking, it won't say Mayor Besseger?
Correct.
Or if it was someone from the public, it won't have that in there?
That's correct. At least initially. With the technologies there, well, we can do all that stuff. But at least initially, it's just going to be a camera that is going to be of the dais that somebody could actually catch. I don't know how good the quality will be actually seeing the projectors, but another thing I'm working on is going to be that the televisions have become so inexpensive that I've ordered two 98-inch TVs that will really increase the resolution. So these screens from 2002 with the projectors will be replaced by a nine-foot TV.
With regards to it being open to the public, then that's something we will have staff control if the numbers should fill up, and then they would be standing kind of like at the shopping center when you go to Walmart or Costco, where they would be standing six feet apart, I'm assuming, outside. And then based upon the agenda item, we would let those individuals come forward accordingly?
There's one of two ways you can manage it. You could, realistically, on an average evening, we don't get 18 or 20 people in the council chambers. If I can eliminate the staff from attending and allowing the 18 seats for the residents, I think we're going to be okay. On that odd evening where we do have a controversial item, we, I would recommend that we control it by potentially putting a speaker out in the breezeway, allowing some members that couldn't fill in with the 18 to remain outside, and then we would allow up to 18 people for a particular item. And I guess what I'd be asking for this evening is going to be to authorize staff to have some discretion on how to manage the social distancing, because I'm not sure how it's going to work. And the example I use is going to be the first meeting we had in the, at the senior center, where we successfully put chairs six feet apart where people came in. I popped my head out into the foyer, and I see 25 people standing next to each other.
And the media, if they came, would have to sit in designated spots, or is there a different spot for media members?
I would defer to Chad, who manages the media, but it's likely that they can come in, and Chad would take care of them and figure out how to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
And with, you know, with access via the, with video and audio and the presentation, I don't know exactly, I'm not sure if they need to be here or not.
Okay. Thank you. Linda, Jim, anything?
I, we, there's 14 people in here now. Would that be 14 plus 18, or what's the head count?
It would be 14 in the audience. So right now, I've got one, two, three, four, five staff members. So it'd be an additional 13. But realistically, we would, if I was going to manage it that fashion, I would only have the staff presenter in the room. And they could be sitting in another room, listening to the council meeting where they can listen to it, so they know when they're going to be queued up.
So there's an empty room over in City Hall where they can listen to this and just come over for their item?
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Were there any public comments on this?
Not on this item.
I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion or action. Lynn? Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see your light. You gave me, they gave me the look, Mr. Whalen, but I couldn't see the light. That's the first time I've heard that, too. Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. So I kind of want to pick up where Von left off at the last meeting. I do feel like we're missing out on some public input as a result of us kind of being sequestered in here. The steps that have been taken in order to allow for comments to be received or calls to come in up to 5:00 o'clock instead of at 3:00 p.m. is a step in the right direction. But I think that, as I look at the council up here, I think that we've all been declared essential workers, and I don't think any of us are small business owners, I'm not so sure. And we're not unemployed presently. And I am of the opinion that we are not hearing enough from that community in these chambers, and that if we opened it up to the public, I would imagine that we would hear from a segment of the community that has a lot to say to us about what their life has been like since the shelter-in-place order or stay-at-home order took effect. The ability for us to see people who want to make these comments is important to me, and I think that they do have frankly a right to speak to us, and it's a modified right at this point, and I would rather it be more open so that they can express themselves and so we can see what they are like, and frankly, kind of the passion that they have when they're making the comments that they'll be making. There are going to be some times when an item will come up that is a little unexpected, perhaps during our more free-flowing conversations that we've had related to the emergency orders that have been put in place. And we would say something that somebody may want to respond to and to allow them to come in and comment on that, as opposed to having to have anticipated what would be the conversation, and then get a phone call in or a written letter in before 5:00 o'clock is probably unfair to them. There, so I really want these meetings to be open to the public, and I think how we have it spaced out is, you know, emphasizes the fact that we are engaging in social distancing. The accommodations that were made outside will also make sure that we engage in the social distancing. I don't want to preclude those, however, who are not wanting to come out of their residence for whatever reason it may be, underlying health issue, they're elderly, or they're just, you know, very concerned to step out into the public in this type of environment. So I am of the opinion, though, I think that traditionally, we've kind of pushed back on the idea of video. To have the video open is probably good, as long as we can figure out a way to hear from those people without them having to have reached out to the city before 5:00 o'clock. And I don't know how we make that happen, because I think it's a little unfair to have people who are present be able to address us if a comment comes up that triggers something that they would want to say. And then if somebody has chosen to stay at home, they would not have the opportunity to comment if something is said that triggers them to want to respond and address their counsel. So I probably should have asked this during the question and answer period, but can, is there some way that we can, if we go live video, that we can have, I don't know, whatever our switchboard capabilities may be, to allow somebody who wants to make a comment on an item but didn't get to us by 5:00 o'clock that they could be heard?
So I'm going to look to Carrie to answer that, or follow my lead. Carrie is going to be that brains behind the operation, is that we have, somebody in the audience has the ability to chat to Carrie, sitting over there, and they could request to make a comment on a particular item, and if we chose to go down that route, then it would be, Carrie would have the ability to unmute that microphone and allow them to make a comment.
Is that right, Carrie? So you kind of are acting as host for the meeting, and you can allow somebody to be heard? And it's Carrie Chau, right?
Yes, Carrie Chau speaking. Yes. So from the host computer, I have the ability to actually chat with everyone who is in attendance, and if they wanted to make a public comment at the time that we're speaking on an item and the public comment section opens up, they can raise their hand or they can send me a message. And if I see that they have audio connection, I can actually unmute them and they can speak on the fly to you guys.
Okay. Would that provide some technological challenges we won't be able to overcome, or is it, because the way you've described it, it sounds like it's doable pretty easily?
Well, WebEx was built for this. It's a matter of just being able to have more control. One thing that we won't be able to do is, if someone calls in on a phone and they dial in, we can't identify who they are. They appear as caller number one. If they're not logging in with a computer, they don't have the option to put in their first name, last name, and a contact.
Okay. And that, and at some point, you know, we get to the question of, well, if somebody doesn't have access to technology in their home, then they don't also get, they don't have the opportunity to participate, and if they're choosing to stay at home, really, they're not going to be heard unless they do comment somehow, call the city before 5:00 p.m.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons why we've wanted them to call in so we can get their information, and we're literally doing a microphone check at 5:30 to make sure. Because if you've got a computer at home that doesn't have a microphone, you're going to potentially hear everything that's being broadcast, but you're not going to be able to speak into the mic.
Well, I, yeah, okay, that's, it's not perfect. But if we can, if we can make these as open as possible, would probably be, these are my comments. If we can make it as open as possible, that's what I would prefer. And from my perspective, that would be opening these meetings to the public, and then allowing for people to comment via the WebEx as Carrie has described. Not perfect, but I think it's the closest we can come today.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
So a different view. The first line of this proposed protocol says, given the current shelter-in-place order. So we are encouraging people to stay home. So to say they could come here is, in my mind, opposite of this. The other thing I want to say is we have maybe two meetings or three in the month of May that could be affected by this. If you assume that the governor might lift his protocol or this order by May 15th, June 1st at the latest, we're talking three meetings. So from my perspective, I think the, I think the technology access and the WebEx, I think, is interesting. I do not think it is worth staff's time and attention to set all this up and see if it works and let people check in and first 18. We're talking three meetings. I would rather manage the agenda, and if there's something that we think is complicated that could wait till June, I think we should do that. Now, we're always going to have social distancing guidelines, I'm sure, through the next 18 months or whatever that is. That's a different question to manage. But in my mind, we might think we're essential, but we're asking our citizens to stay home and leave their businesses closed. So why would we say you can come here, but you can't do your livelihood? To me, it's exactly the opposite message that we want to send. So I think with great respect, I will disagree with that. Not, I don't, I agree with everything you said about people should engage, and we should see them, and they should talk, and all of that, I think is true. I think we manage the agenda items and move the ones that are complicated. But in my mind, it's not worth staff investment of energy to test all this out for three meetings, possibly two meetings in the month of May. I just, I think we're overstating this challenge, and we'll be back open at some point, maybe this way, but maybe not. So I, I'm not interested in that. We're supposed to be sheltering in place. I probably won't come if there's 18 people here because of my elderly status. And you're close, so don't say other words. But I mean, it just, it doesn't seem it's the wrong message. Stay in place, we're going to do what the governor says, but oh, we're just kidding. We think you should come. We're going to let you come here. I think that is just 100% the wrong message to send, so. But I think your protocol is fine, and I think live streaming is fine, too, whatever works out. But I'm, I think we are totally hypocritical if we say you can come here, but not to your place of business. I think that's not, I'm wholly opposed to that.
Thank you, Lynn. Jose?
I hate the phrase, but I'm going to use it. New normal. Everyone's using that. There's going to be a new normal even afterward we reopen our cities, and there's going to be a new normal when we reopen city council meetings. So even though there's maybe three, four more meetings where we absolutely have to do what we're doing now, when we reopen, this technology will be part of it. And, and we need to know how to master that technology, and we need to do some of this stuff, because we're going to ask people to come here. Maybe it won't be six feet away, maybe it'll be three feet and masks, but, you know, because the masks work to, to, for that same reason, is to, so we can be together, but you have to wear a mask. So, and the compromise is that we can sit, set each other maybe four feet away, but you must wear a mask. And maybe we have to provide that mask, because we're bringing people in here. So there's a lot of things to work out in the next three or four meetings. And so for that, I want to support this, because we've got to get the technology right, because it's not going to be the same. Even after we start opening, opening things up, it's going to be different. And I agree with Ron, we need to see our people here. And we're not encouraging them to come, but if there's an issue on the agenda that motivates them that they absolutely need to be here to advocate for that one item, they should feel free to come. And there might be some kind of invite or something where there is such an item where they absolutely need to be here. And they represent maybe a group. They can send one advocate for that one group, because that item, that action item is so important that they need to see their council members, they need to speak to them directly for that one item. So, you know, how do we schedule them here, too? We've got to get other strategies, too, not just what you proposed. I don't think what you proposed is out of the ordinary. I think we're going to have to do this and then more, maybe, because there's a new normal. That, you know, some of us, some counties, some states are wrangling this virus, but it's not gone. That, we said we flattened the curve. All that means is that we played hide-and-seek with that virus. That virus is still out there, and we've, we've hidden from it. The minute we start coming out, guess what? It's going to find some of us. And explosion will happen. That's why you say there might be a second phase to this. So we've got to be prepared. So we need these strategies for that second phase.
Councilmember Monatua?
Yes. You know, we talk about essential. It is not essential for us. It is essential meaning for the people, people's meeting, the people's government. And so that's why, you know, they need access to us, and we need to accommodate that. And so whether it's we staying home and they coming, it doesn't matter to me about that part, but they need to be able to access these halls during these designated times. We call it essential, yet we say, but you can't be there. It's your meeting, it's your government, it's your city, but don't be there. But you can try to accommodate, you know, doing all of these other things. I say, no, you know, let them come. Let them be here. We serve them. This is their government. We, you know, serve at their mercy. And how do we work together to allow them to, to make an, you know, when we say it's essential, yet they can't. But yet, they can go to the store and stand next to each other, and there can be 50 people together, you know. No one controls all that, yet at least we can provide something that is very structured, where the staff has giving, given a lot of thought into it. I truly value, you know, the face-to-face where you see someone actually addressing us. You know, these are effective, but, you know, many times when we get these emails right in front of us before a meeting or after a meeting, it doesn't have the same effect as if, you know, Joe Clovis is standing right there and saying, this is why, you know, what you're deciding affects me. This is what matters. And so I'm all for the streaming video. I'm all for opening it to the public, and I support what Councilmember Flores said about how do we also adapt it moving forward. You know, thank you, Councilmember Whalen, for what you shared with regards to, you know, the importance of trying to get everyone the ability to address their council and their, and their government. So I'm all for that.
Thank you, Ron. I, I think people should shelter at home as much as they can. Only go out when they really should, especially if they're in a condition that they would be susceptible to the virus. But there's a higher calling. I think there's going to be times where someone is truly upset or wants to make sure that we understand exactly what they mean, and maybe the written word isn't the way that they want to communicate it. I think they need to have the ability to come in here and tell us, you got this wrong, this is what we want you to do. And they can potentially do that through different means, but I think we need to leave it, you need to have an option where somebody can come in and tell us that we're just flat-dead wrong on something and that we need to make changes. All right? That's all I have. Or do we have a, Lynn, go ahead.
I just, I got to say, so for me personally, I'm the only one that's not going to come now. So what you've now just said is, so because you're 65, you stay home, and you are not essential to have part of the conversation. It feels very personal, and I know that's weird, but I got to say, I think all this higher calling, it's three meetings, it's shelter-in-place, that's the order. So it doesn't feel very good. If Harry was here, he wouldn't come either. It just, I got to say, it feels incredibly disrespectful. So I, I don't disagree with all the li- So, I, I don't disagree with all the live streaming, all of that. That's fine, but it just feels like, I don't know, I'm just going to leave it there because I am, I've only been angry about twice in my city council experience and maybe three times, and I, I'm as angry now as I've been all along. I think all of that is seeing the people's government. That's just, of course, it's their government. This is an emergency. It's a virus. So, I just, I feel like all of that is overstated. So, I am angry and disappointed and, um, leave it at that. Thank you for letting me say that.
I'm sorry. Do we, any other comments? Do we have anyone who wants to make a motion on this?
And there were no public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. And there, the, and just want to say, the public comments that I have that have been printed out are regarding the agenda items, so I will read those then.
Correct.
Just for the people who are listening.
So, I will make the motion. I move that we approve the revised city council meeting protocol imposed during COVID-19 state of emergency with the inclusion of two things. One is opening up the meetings to the public so they can participate in the conversation in a person-to-person format, as has been discussed and outlined by John Holt. In addition to that, to allow for people to engage through the WebEx, using Kerry as the host. So, if we say something that they want to contribute to, that she can, if possible, unmute them and allow them to participate in the conversation as well. Is that clear enough, John?
Yes.
Okay. That's my motion, Mayor.
And the video piece of this? Did I hear that?
Say it one more time.
And the video piece of this?
Yeah, allow for the video. And that, yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
For the one item passes.
I'll just repeat the motion. As you, uh, on a motion by Councilmember Wayland, seconded by Councilmember Flores, to approve the revised items that were motioned. We, it's approved on a four-one vote with Councilmember Ashbeck voting no.
Now, we come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Mr. Clerk, were there any public comments?
We had two public comments, of which you have a hard copy in front of you. Neither one of them wished to be read into the record, but as I indicated, I would put a summary of their comments. Mr. Dennis Ward recommended that all store employees and customers should be required to wear a mask. The second one was from Christine Barnum. She would like the opportunity to return to work in her 700-square-foot salon, hair abduction, working one-on-one with a client. And hard copies are in the days.
Thank you, John. And I'll close public comment in regards to ordinances and resolutions with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances. The reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution ordinance be read and filed, further reading of the resolution ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Consent calendar items, these are items that are routine in nature, are placed upon the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Votes in favor of adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received unanimous vote upon introduction, introduction are considered consent calendar items. Any member of the public, any member of the council wish to have a consent calendar item polled? Seeing none, any member of the public? Mr. Clerk?
There's no public comment on the consent calendar.
I will close public comments and come back for a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Clerk?
Uh, for the consent, for the consent calendar, items number two through five, on a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Flores, is approved, five-o.
Thank you. Public hearings. A public hearing is an open consideration within a regular or scheduled special meeting of the city council for which special notice has been given and may be required. When a public hearing is continued, noticing of the adjourned item is required per Government Code 54955.1. Item six is consider actions related to the annexation of territory, annexation number 61P6262, the northwest corner of Peach and Spruce to the City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. Item A, consider approval of a resolution annexing territory, annexation number 61P6262, northwest corner of Peach and Spruce, to the City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services, and calling a special landowner election to annex territory, annexation number 61, to the City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. And B, consider approval of a resolution of the City of Clovis declaring the results of a special landowner election and directing recording of a notice of special lien for the City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2004-1, Police and Fire Services. Jay Schfeigel is the presenter, but I will read this into the record. This is the time and place for the public hearing in this council's proceedings for the Community Facilities District Number 2004-1. The hearing is to acquire annexation number 61 into the district and to levy a special tax in the annexation number 61. Before I formally open the proceedings, has the clerk received any written protest?
I have not.
The hearing is now open. We will have the first presentation by staff about annexation number 61. After that, we will receive comments and questions and any verbal protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. On March 16th, 2020, the council heard a request by the affected property owners to include territory at the northwest corner of Peach and Spruce, as indicated on the detailed map, and identified as CFD Annexation Number 61 to the city, CFD 2004-1. Tonight's actions will finalize the annexation process by holding a public hearing and property owner election.
Are there any comments, questions, or protests from the audience, Mr. Clerk?
No, there's none.
I will close the hearing. We may now consider and adopt the resolution annexing territory, annexation 61, to the Community Facilities District Number 2004-1, which will annex territory described in the boundary map to the district and call a special property owner election, which will call for the property owner vote to approve the special tax and appropriations limit for annexation number 61.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None.
For item six A, on a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Flores, it's approved, five-o.
Resolution annexing territory to the Community Facilities District Number 2004-1 and calling special owner election. Will the clerk please announce the results of the property owner vote?
Mayor, I'm in receipt of one ballot representing 12 votes for approval, so it's a unanimous approval.
Thank you. The record shows that the property owner votes are unanimous and in favor of the levy of special taxes and establishment of the appropriation limits. We will now proceed with the final actions for the district.
I'll move that we declare the results of the special landowner election and direct the recording of the notice of special tax lien for City of Clovis Community Facilities District Number 2004-1.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
For item six B, on a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Flores, we have a five-o vote, approved.
Thank you. Administrative items, item seven, receiving and file update from the police department regarding potential use of new technology. Chief Fleming is the presenter.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thanks for allowing us to come speak tonight. I'm just going to do an intro and then Lieutenant Monroe kind of fill in the, the fine details about the two programs we're presenting. I just wanted to say before I started that Lieutenant Monroe is our newest member of command staff, effective of March 16th. He's been a part of us.
Congratulations.
His whole times have been pretty much COVID-related.
Yeah, it's been interesting.
So, for the police department, we historically have always tried to be on the cutting edge, I think, with everything we do in the city of Clovis. How can we provide the best service for our, our citizens? And always kind of want to lead that, be on the cutting edge. So, these two items that we have tonight, we're going to present, we will be one of three agencies in the entire country doing these programs at this time. We're going to try to do a 90-day trial. One will be the DFR, which is a drone first responder. And I won't get into specifics, I'll, I'll let Jim do that. And then the second will be a live 911, and I'll let him explain that as well. So, as far as cutting-edge stuff, I just want to give a history real quick on things that we've done in the past and the success that they've, um, we found from them. One being back in 2000, we had the, um, our CCTV camera project that Lieutenant Bob Keys was kind of in charge of. At that time, he started with Clovis and Herndon was one intersection and put up a few cameras. And 20 years later, we have 400, over 450 cameras and I think about 1.5 petabytes of data that we can store. So, our entire jail system can be stored for up to a year. We can pull video. And then any camera in the city that we have, we can pull video for about 30 days. So, it's pretty amazing. We use that today, every day. And a lot of times, our dispatchers probably make more arrests than some of our officers using that, that information. So, they're, they're given information, they, they get a caller, they're given better descriptions of suspects that, that people are calling in, vehicle description, and relaying that to the officers. A lot of times, helping the watch commanders decide on what's the best allocation of resources based on that information. So, it's really been a great program, and we hope that the DFR and the, the live 911 that we're going to present tonight will be just an expansion of that program and, and helping our officers be more efficient. Uh, one of our, if you can hit that next slide. One of our department priorities is five-minute response time to calls for service, emergency calls for service. And, um, really with the, the next two items, rapid growth of the city and staffing levels, it's, it's going to be challenging for us. So, right now, this last year, we just hit right under five-minute response times, and we're projecting for this fiscal year is kind of how we judge it, to be right at five minutes. With the growth to Norris coming north of Shepherd and finishing off of Loma Vista, it's going to be, it'd be, become challenging for us. Staffing levels, we're at 0.85 per capita per thousand, which I'll argue with you that that is the lowest staffing in the Central Valley, probably from Stockton to Bakersfield. And I'm working on pulling those numbers now to say that confidently, that is the case. But I'm, I'm pretty sure right now that, that we're probably the lowest staff department in the Central Valley for sure. So, how do we, we don't just cry about that, how do we fix it? We look towards technology and other items that we can make the staffing we have more efficient and more, um, reliable and, and information that we get and say, obviously, safety is the biggest factor. So, with that, we just want you guys to, to listen to this tonight. Give us feedback, give us concerns, comments. I will just, I, I know Jim will probably hit on it, but we currently have a UAV team, drone program that we've had in effect for three and a half years. We've had zero issues with it, zero complaints. It's been very successful, and this will really take it to the next level. And we've been working on this for probably a year, and really, the, the COVID emergency is probably the only good thing that it's brought for us, is kind of opening the doors to allow this to take place for us. So, I'll pass it to, to Jim.
Thanks, Chief. So, uh, yeah, we took a trip in October, Chief and I did, down to Chula Vista, California. Their police department's been running this program now for about the last year and a half, drone as a first responder. And rather than me talk about it and tell you how great it is, there's a quick little news clip that John will play for you that'll give you a real good understanding of how both live 911 and the DFR program work down in Chula Vista, which is what we hope to mirror here in Clovis. So, as you see, and John, if you could just go to the next slide when you're ready. Chula Vista's program has been rather successful. They are part of an IPP, which is a acronym I won't explain to you, but they're a special group down in San Diego that can do things that other agencies can't. They have special FAA permission, which allows them to fly beyond line of sight, so they can actually lose sight of the drone, fly up to three miles. And they have two launch sites that can pretty much cover their entire city. Just a couple of things to talk about the success here. They've had, and this is current as of Friday when I pulled this, they've flown over 2,070 times, but they've assisted in 276 arrests, meaning that the drone was used as a major part of finding that person. They've avoided the dispatching of 488 units. So, 488 times, they didn't have to send an officer because the drone arrived overhead and said either the, the vehicle was gone, the person was gone, or it was not what the caller was calling about. So, a saving of obviously resources, gas, time, money, all that good stuff. And then, uh, this is the big one. The, the drone was first on scene in 917 of those 2,000 calls. And so, almost 50% of the time, the drone is actually arriving ahead of the officers and able to give them real-time information from the air. Really, this is no different than a helicopter program that we have, you know, the CHP, Sheriff and Fresno PD. It costs a lot less, and we can cover some more ground here in Clovis because they only come to assist us when they're available and then when they're up flying. So, pretty impressive stats from Chula Vista. The chief and I, like I said, we visited in October and we thought it was very, an interesting program. And as things developed, we were able to get some technology, a, a new drone and some software. And with this situation we're currently in and staffing, we thought it's kind of the perfect time to try and try this 90-day pilot program. We're also, because of COVID, trying to distance our officers and trying to keep them from having to run all over the city and, and make physical contact. And if we can do some of this with a, a drone, make some overhead observations, it's possibly, you know, a, a savings of both time and then some, some health savings on the officer's part as well. So, John, if you can go ahead. So, we're going to start our 90-day pilot, of course, with a one-mile response zone, and that is typically what we're allowed to do by FAA regulations right now. We have to keep the drone within line of sight, which means the pilot has to be able to see it from the rooftop. One mile is about, during the day, about as far as a naked eye can see. So, we're going to stay So we're going to stay within that one-mile zone. So roughly, we're talking Alluvial to the north, Bullard to the south, Armstrong to the east, and Miniwawa to the west. Going forward, our hope is that once we get some flights under our belt and we get some good data, that we can petition the FAA to go beyond line of sight, like Chula Vista's currently doing, go up to three miles. This opens up nearly our entire city from one launch site, which is really neat. You can't see it probably, but basically Shepherd to Ashland, all the way out to Locan and then Willow. So almost the four corners of our city, it's not going to be 100%, but I would estimate it's probably about 85% to 90%. And it definitely covers all of our hot call zones that we go to on a very regular basis every single day. So, this is kind of how it looks. This is actually upstairs in our dispatch center now, we've been running some test flights. The person that flies the helicopter actually, not the helicopter, the drone is actually in our dispatch center. So this, what we call a teleoperator pushes a button, pushes an address in, and the drone goes to a predetermined height and it flies to the address. We tried it the other day and it flew directly over to where we want it. It hovers. We have some safety regulations built in with the software. We have a geofence, so as much as hard as we try, we cannot fly it outside that one-mile geofence. It does not go. It also won't go any higher than 380 feet, we can't go any higher than 400 by FAA regulations. And it won't go any lower currently than 120, that's our low ceiling. We've knocked out all the cell towers, so safety is our number-one priority in this. And we think that we've done a pretty good job so far being safe with our test flights. So a call comes in, 911, the teleoperator listens to it, decides, hey, this is a good one, I think we're going to send it up. He pushes a button, the drone goes overhead, and with the mouth in his right hand, that's how he's flying this drone, it's absolutely amazing. But the drone itself has a 30X camera on it, so it can zoom 30 times. So even though we can go out to a mile currently, we can quite honestly zoom in to a mile and a half, almost two miles, using that amazing camera. Chula Vista showed us a video, officer-safety-wise, of a call they got. It was a man with a gun that was in front of a restaurant, sitting at a table just like this, waving a gun around. And so they dispatched the drone. Drone got overhead before the officers did, was able to stay half a mile out, guy didn't even know it was there, zoomed in on his hand, and they could tell that he had a gun in his hand, but they also tell that it was a lighter, an actual cigarette lighter shaped like a gun. So the operator was able to radio down to the officers and say, hey, we have observation, we know it's not a real gun. And that allowed the officers to approach in a much different manner than they would have if they actually thought this gentleman had a gun. I personally believe that, we never know, but that that possibly prevented an officer bomb shooting. Because had that gentleman in Chula Vista not done what the officers told him, without that information, bad things could have happened. So there are so many possibilities for this program. And of course, so that's just one part of it, the teleoperator, John, if you could go one more. The drone is actually launched off of a rooftop. Currently, we've identified one rooftop, which is at 155 North Sunnyside, that's the Public Utilities Building, it's a two-story building, and it's an absolutely beautiful roof for this, it has 360-degree view of the airspace. And so the gentleman you see here, he's actually what's called the Remote Pilot in Charge. We have to have a person on the roof as well, FAA regulations, to keep visual observations of the airspace and the drone. If we have a helicopter, a hot air balloon that comes in and violates the airspace where the drone is, this person here, you can see, he actually has a remote control with an iPad in his hand, he can take over flight of that drone from the person in the dispatch center because he's got eyes on and he can lower it, divert it, bring it back. So he's ultimately the person that's in charge of the flight, but it's not a real fun job. You just sit up there and pretty much watch it most of the time unless there's an emergency. And we don't quite know how this is going to work in July and August on a roof, but we're going to figure that out. Right, right. So like I said, Chula Vista's seen great success. There's another city currently that launched their program last week, so we're the third one, just by a few days. Redondo Beach down in Southern California is doing this as well. They've had some really, really good success flying at both daytime and nighttime. They've told us that they can actually see their drone at night, when it's dark, up to two to two and a half miles because of the strobe light. So that means that we, as well, would be line of sight and at nighttime, we could fly two to two and a half miles as well on a clear day. So we're excited to hopefully get started. That's all I had for you. Chief, do you have anything else? I'm sorry, yeah, Live 911, so that's kind of the second part of this. Live 911 is a software that allows the officers and the drone pilots to actually hear the 911 calls come in as they come in, which you saw. The neat thing about the software is that the officers in the field will now have software running in the background that we can set geofences. So if they're driving through the city and a 911 call about a domestic disturbance comes in at Clovis and Barstow, they will instantly hear that and they will hear exactly what's going on. Now, when a 911 call comes in, it takes time for the dispatcher to listen, ask questions, put it in the computer. Sometimes, as a former dispatcher, it takes a minute to two minutes to actually get that call in, get airtime, and get it out. So it'll allow our officers to be a little bit more aware of what's going on and we can set geofences that will, they'll only hear the 911 calls that, let's just say, we set a mile geofence. So anything within a mile of their current area, everything else will be filtered out so it's not sensory overload. Or they can, they can set it really to whatever they want. So that's the Live 911 software. When you pair it with the DFR, the drone program, they go hand-in-hand, but we also have the added feature of putting it out to our officers in the patrol cars as well so they can hear what's going on. So, after that, all right, good. So that's pretty much all we had on the program. Hopefully, the video gave you a good idea of what we're trying to do. All of our pilots have been trained, all of them are going through, actually, half of them already have 107 FAA licenses, so they're good there. The other half are just waiting for the testing centers to open back up because they're closed. And then they will all be FAA-certified. So open it up to any questions you may have and I'll answer.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. Really love both programs and very excited about the opportunity for us to kind of use technology to leverage our resources. When I've looked at the cameras in the dispatch center that are in particular areas in the city of Clovis, they have the ability to kind of gray out certain areas that are private in nature. And my, I'm just going to tell you what I think the answer is to my question and then you can correct me if I'm wrong. But because we're going to be going up so high and then going across the city, that would be really the equivalent of almost a helicopter doing the same thing. And so therefore, there would be no concerns, at least from a legal perspective, related to any violation of a person's privacy. Is that fair to say?
Very fair to say. Legally, we are good. Just want to also kind of expand upon that, is that by policy, we don't conduct any proactive policing flights with it. This is all reactive. This is reactive to 911 calls, emergency calls, or calls that become emergencies. So we're not going to be out conducting any proactive surveillance. We can't even do that with our program that we've had success with the last two years. So yeah, that is not a concern, but legally, we are in airspace that FAA has given us permission to be in. We're good there, no problems.
Okay, thank you.
How expensive is the drone? And if it gets approved after the 90 days and then move out of there? This is something that would become permanent, correct? Permanent use of our department?
We hope so and we hope to expand it. So the drones are relatively expensive. A DFR drone, and there's only one right now in the nation that can kind of do it, run anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 per drone. We were lucky enough to be loaned a drone for COVID-type purposes from a company that let us have it for 90 days. So yes, we would need to invest some resources into it. Our technology is changing so fast and it's really hard to keep up, especially in the drone space. We've been told that there are drones coming that will stay up in the air for 60 minutes. This one can stay up for about 25, 30. And the camera is better than the one that we currently have. Our vision, and I think we'll see this someday, is that there'll be a drone, let's just say, at every fire station throughout the city of Clovis. It'll stay in a box or a garage, for lack of a better term. And when a call comes out, the computer will know which one's closest, it'll automatically launch it and go overhead, similar to what we're doing here, just without having to have the person on the roof. We're probably a good three to five years away from that, just with the FAA. But yeah, the drones are expensive. The part that's even more expensive is having staff, you know, staff it and on the roof.
Okay, that was my next question. Will we need potentially two people per drone? The way it's going? Or will the dispatch person be able to see, if we have five, be able to see all five and we just need that one person but five people on rooftops?
Yeah, right now, until the FAA changes their regulations, for each launch site, you do need to have someone on the roof with the drone. So like Redondo Beach, Chula Vista is actually running three launch sites, so they have three people. And then they have the teleoperator. You just need one teleoperator up in the dispatch center to run all three drones. But what Chula Vista's done is they've actually outsourced to a private company and are using a contractor basically for their staff on the roof at a much reduced rate and saving quite a bit of money. Because it doesn't need to be a sworn person, it just needs to be someone that's trained to watch.
Are we going to get little droid wings for our uniforms? I just had to ask, I have a uniform guide.
We have not talked about, I'm sure someone will request it.
Little, little, our little C-3PO or something?
Exactly.
Very good presentation. This, let me, Chief, just from staying within our five-minute window, if we use these droids for this purpose and they go on scene, is that, when the droid goes on scene, is that going to be counted as the five minutes? Have you thought about that? So that, because realistically, we do have assets there.
I think it would count, but yeah, we'd probably have to determine that. But we could probably add a statistic to show, they're tracking separately, Chula Vista's the time, and it's a minute and a half to two minutes of response time for the drone. But I think if somebody's there and we're able to then dispatch an ambulance if we determine at a traffic scene that, hey, this is something, somebody needs some help for medical aid, it starts giving us the ability to start setting up perimeters or start setting up how we're going to respond to that call. So I think technically, yeah, it does qualify, but it's probably something to consider on our goals if that's going to change.
I can see this really being helpful, especially with the, you get a no details traffic accident. And you don't know if anybody's injured and sometimes the officers, based on the intersection, like if it's Clovis and San Onofre, which would probably be a higher-speed traffic accident, we might go code three. And every time we go code three, we expose ourselves to getting injured or something. This would be, this could be a real game changer in that respect. Any questions, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Mr. Clerk, were any public comments?
There was no public comment.
I will close public comments and this is a receive and file. Jim, congratulations, great presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item number eight, consider approval of appointment to Personnel and Planning Commissions. Luke Serpa is presenter. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get back over here. Okay, so Personnel Commissioners Diane Stabler and Jose Reyes have both served on our commission for a while. Their terms are expiring in May. Both have requested to be reappointed to those positions. And Mayor Besseger is recommending that they be reappointed. At the same time, Planning Commissioner Paul Hinkel, his term also expires in May. He has requested to be reappointed and Mayor Besseger is also recommending his reappointment. Should the council confirm these reappointments, their terms would run another four years until May of 2024. And staff is providing this as a recommendation and that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Luke? Seeing none, I will ask for public comments. Mr. Clerk, are any public comments?
No public comments.
I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion or for action.
I'll move that we approve, and this is Bob Whalen, I'll move that we approve the appointment of those personnel and a planning commission member.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk?
On agenda, item number eight, we have a motion by Councilmember Whalen, seconded by Councilmember Flores, approved 5-0.
Thank you. Item 10 is workshop for Clovis City Council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact of the ongoing city operations.
Nine.
Item number nine. Oh, hidden there, I'm sorry. Thank you. Item number nine, consider approval resolution of the Clovis City Council confirming the Director of Emergency Services orders. Luke Serpa is the presenter. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, council approved, amongst the orders approved, was Emergency Order 2020-08, which was an order that it was for internal purposes, it waived the vacation cap, the vacation accrual cap for our employees. Tonight's item before you is a little cleanup issue, it's 2020-08A, meaning it's amending that. The amendment was relatively minor. As we allow employees to accrue additional vacation because they're not being able to take off the vacation, take off the time during this emergency, we wanted to give them a certain amount of time to burn that excess accrual up. And originally, the order provided six months for that. Under this amendment, after discussing with some employee groups, the proposal is six months or the length of the emergency, whichever is the longest. And that's just, it's a bit of a, just a catch-all, in case this goes longer than six months, they may accrue more time than they can burn off in six months. So it's going to push out that time, just to whichever is longer. That's the only order for approval tonight and I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for Luke? Seeing none, I will open this to the public. Mr. Clerk, are any public comments?
No public comments.
I will close public comments and come back to the council for discussion or for action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approved last week's order. If we have further discussion about it, we can do it in a workshop. But we spent the last two weeks, 45 minutes, on actions we've already taken, which doesn't make any sense. So I'd like to make the motion and move it on and then we can have discussion in the workshop if you want to amend any of these things.
We have a motion. And I'll say it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk?
For agenda, item number nine, on a motion by Councilmember Ashbeck, seconded by Councilmember Flores, it's approved 5-0.
Thank you. Now we'll do number 10, which is a workshop for the Clovis City Council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal government, state of California, County of Fresno, and city of Clovis, and explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we do for each one of these meetings, since we've declared an emergency, we'll have a workshop. This is a time for a dialogue and for you to request information from us to give some direction. I'll start out with a little bit of a summary and kind of tell you where we're at right now. It's been five weeks since the city declared its emergency and about four and a half weeks since the state issued the stay-home order. Time flies when you're having fun, I guess. It's actually been a long five weeks. The, it's been interesting to see the types of calls we're getting and how they have changed over that period. When the governor first issued his stay-home order, in fact, while the press conference was ongoing, the city started getting calls as to, hey, what does this mean? Can I open from our businesses? And again, this is, this is not our order, it's a state order. Those calls actually started coming in during the press conference. There was no one here at 8 o'clock at night, well, there were some of us here. Some of us were over in the EOC and then our public safety people were on. And Public Safety Dispatch actually started getting those calls during the press conference. So the first couple of days, we were overwhelmed with calls as to, hey, can I open? And being, you know, trying to help our business community, we put together our interpretation of what the order said. And that was revised over a couple of days as the state revised their order. And then that kind of got settled down. And then after that, the call volume kind of shifted to a lot of calls of people calling and saying, hey, I think this guy is open and shouldn't be. And we dealt with that. Again, this is not our order. Again, we have a wide variety of options for enforcing this order. But between our Economic Development Group and our professional police department staff, we generally gain the compliance throughout the city and have yet to issue any real enforcement action. It's just been through verbal discussions and notifications. We have not issued any, taken any official enforcement action, except for one early-on price gouging issue. Recently, I think people are getting cabin fever. The weather's nice. I've noticed more traffic on the roads in the last week. And our calls have kind of changed as well. We're still getting a very large percentage, maybe a third, that are calling us to tell who they think is open that shouldn't be. We're getting, and actually a surprising large group of workers in Essential Services calling us saying, hey, I should be able to be off too, you need to close down my box. You need to close down my boss. And, and then, and then the rest of the calls are coming from businesses, but they are split two ways. We're getting a lot of still questions, you know, can I open or can I not? The state's order is kind of ambiguous on this. And, and we're working, we're working with the state Department of Public Health to try to get these issues resolved and get the, the correct answer back to, to our businesses. We, we, again, it's not our order, but we don't want to just tell them, call the state. It's not up to us. So we're trying to work with them and get that. But recently, in the last week, we started to get a significant number of calls from businesses saying, I'm opening. I'm tired of this. And, and we're also getting calls from the public saying, you need to let these people open. So I, I think we're seeing that nationwide, that there is a push. The numbers are looking good for California. They're much lower than they were originally projected as far as hospitalizations and deaths. But we have not yet seen a, any kind of significant or statistically significant or continuous decline either. So we don't know that we've reached our peak yet. You know, we're, we're doing well as a state, we're doing well as a county. There are thirty-five cases in Clovis right now? I'm sorry, thirty-two closed, confirmed cases in Clovis. That includes the unincorporated area that has a Clovis address. But we're, we're doing much better than some states are. But we're trying to navigate through this. But it's, it's been ambiguous. And it's going to get more complicated. And we don't know when the state is going to open. The governor gave a press conference. He identified six things that had to, six criteria that had to be met before they would start reopening. I know that there is growing pressure on, on the state to reopen. But it, this order is going to get even more complicated once we start reopening. Because it's not going to be just a toggle switch that we go back to complete reopening. There's going to be controls, there's going to be social distancing requirements and such. And we're trying to get out ahead of that as much as possible. We are not, you know, we're not the, the agency really with the responsibility for developing this criteria. We're not, it's not our order. We're not public health experts. But we have a pretty good economic development team that's trying, that wants to make sure that we work with those people, work with the county public health, to try to have these protocols developed and out there soon enough that the businesses can implement them and have them in place whenever they do get the green light to open. That, that's really our push right now. I have reached out to the county administrative officer and asked for a meeting with his staff. And, and that was last week. He's going to get back to me this week and we'll set it up. He's in agreement. And we will start developing these protocols and hopefully get them dispersed. What we don't want to do is wait until we get the green light to start thinking about, how are we going to do this? But again, it's, it's, we can come up with our ideas, but we have to run them through the county health. And then they have to go through the state health. And, and that's going to be kind of the delay. That's where we're at now. Andy's working on these things based on the CDC guidance that's out there. But until we actually have those meetings with the county health, we won't, we have anything that's really hard and fast that, yeah, this is the kind of protocol we're going to be looking for. But that's where we're at now. I'm available for questions, comments, input.
Any questions for Luke? Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. So related to the reopening of some of the businesses, and, you know, and I'm trying to pay as much attention to what the governor's been communicating in that area. And he does, he does seem to be deferring a lot of the difficult decisions down to the local level. He says the counties and the cities, to a certain degree, are going to be making some of these, these decisions in coordination with the guidelines that the State of California has put out. My impression, though, and I guess I wanted to run this by you, is that the State of California is going to be allowing people to reopen. But the local folks, when that happens, can still keep places closed, but the reverse is not true. That is to say, nobody can reopen until the State of California says it's okay to reopen. It's almost as though the State of California is saying that they are, they are going to allow cities to be more stringent in allowing opening, but they are not going to allow cities to be less stringent. Have you had that impression as well?
Yeah, that, that's my understanding of, of the entire situation. Cities, and some cities did issue stay-home orders before the state issued theirs. Clovis did issue some local ordinances before this, orders before the state. We issued one to close restaurants and bars, and we issued one to close gyms prior to the state issuing their stay-home order. Now, those two orders are really redundant right now. The state's order overrides our orders, and even if we lift ours, the state's remains in place. We've left ours in place just to try to avoid the confusion of us lifting our order when the state's is still in place. We will lift those when the state pulls back. But when the state comes through, they will, they will set the, the minimum standard. Local public health departments, like the county, could go above that. Local cities could go above that and say, no, we're not ready for that. But generally, we, as we said way back when we started this, declared emergency, we're following the state and county guidelines. We're not, we don't have a public health officer on staff. So we are reliant upon the Fresno County Public Health Officer and the state public health officer. So assuming that if the state says business A can open under these conditions, and I'm assuming the Fresno County Public Health Officer would agree, then we would obviously follow those agreements. But we, but we can't open anything prior to that.
Not to beat a dead horse, but we just opened our city council meeting prior to anybody saying we could. So I just wanted, the irony here is just not lost on me. So we are the, you just said we can't be less stringent than the state, but we just said we're going to open this public meeting. So enough of that. I saw in the paper that Hanford was getting $325,000 from the CARES Act. Do you know that? I know that Fresno, the city of Fresno got a lot of money. The county got a lot of money because they have more than 500,000 people with the city limit. But I read somewhere that Hanford was getting $325,000 from the CARES Act. Do you know that?
I'll turn it over to Andy. I was not aware of any city of less than 500,000 that was eligible to apply.
And I wish I could tell you where I saw it, because I can't remember. But I was like, Hanford? And 325 is not a ton, but it's not nothing. So do you know that?
So, and is it Andy House, or in the CARES Act, there's also an allocation of CBPG funding that is going for very specific reasons. And Hanford most likely got an allocation of that. We did get, noticed that we got $440,000 coming our way that we're planning for right now.
So they didn't, they didn't specify wherever I saw that. So you think it's the same?
It could be that. That would make sense based on how that funding works.
And I guess my only other comment, I have another comment about something later. But, I mean, I don't know, Congressman Nunes isn't a big fan of advocating for anything special for his cities. He's made that very clear. But it may be time that we do a letter of advocacy to this, to the congressman, asking him to make sure that the next round of budget considerations for the federal government include state and local, because I don't think we made it into this next pass.
One that's currently being discussed, yes. We, it, it was, there was a push, there was a push from the National League of Cities and the California League of Cities. And so far, that has not materialized.
I don't know if we, we have communicated to Congressman Nunes if there would be agreement that we write that letter. But he, he's not a, he's never, he's not a supporter of sort of individual requests, but on just on behalf of cities generally in his district, he may consider supporting this. If the council is interested in that.
If there's consensus amongst council, then yes, we can prepare that letter.
Congressman, one to it. Luke, with regards to the parks, are the staff going out every week, every two weeks to re-tape? Because I've driven through and a lot of the tape has gone off some of the play structures and or picnic areas. Or will we not redo any of that?
We will re-tape as we can get to it. You know, our, our park maintenance was already reduced at the last economic downturn and never recovered. So every, you may have noticed when we were out doing the taping and, and the signage, the parks really started looking shabby, because the only bodies we have are those bodies that should be mowing the lawn. We've got to pull them off the lawnmower. So they will be getting to it as, as quickly as they can. But we are not out there every day replacing any tape that gets torn down.
And I wanted to ask Andy or Sean if, at the next week's meeting, if you can give us sort of your feel for what's going on with the small businesses and, you know, what, what's sort of the reaction? And even solicit them to come and speak to us, saying, you know, we would love to hear their opinion. If they feel like you're going to filter it, then for them to come. Will we actually solicit their thoughts and their comments? So that way, we actually hear from the business community, you know, what, what we've done, see if it's helped them, but also what, what their needs are, something like that.
Yeah, that'd be fine. We are having hundreds of conversations with businesses on a weekly basis and have a really good handle on what they're experiencing. Some are going through some of the hardest, unimaginable times they've ever gone through, and some are doing better than they'd ever imagined. But we'd be happy to bring that back to you and provide some information.
And then in that, can you also, you know, recognize businesses that have, that have gone above and beyond? You know, businesses that have given, whether it's to our police, to the hospital, just so that we can kind of get a sense of, you know, the, the good stories that are also out there? That would be very beneficial to, sure. Jose, do you have anything?
It's a little frustrating, because everyone keeps that, talking about, especially in California, everyone, and the governor. He wants testing, 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 testing. And, and no one has a, a test that anyone's willing to validate. I mean, not, not the one for, not, not anyone for the actual COVID-19 disease or the, or, or the antibodies. We need, they, they tell us what their criteria is going to be, yet they don't give any, there's none to, to be had throughout California, throughout the United States for that matter. And so until we get some testing, the, the few studies that have been made, one in Santa Clara and the other one in LA by those universities, show that many more people than was once thought actually have had the disease. And therefore, what they're saying, if you read those articles from those scholars, is that more people have had it, and therefore, the danger of that disease is less than was thought. Yet, no one will facilitate more of those testings, because no one can get enough of those testings. At least, if you listen to Dr. Fauci, he proves the, those tests is valid, as not being valid. So it's frustrating for us here locally, how can we make decisions when even the national and state authorities won't give us what? They tell us what they want, but they won't give, or they're not available. They, they won't give us a test that wouldn't, would, um, let us get close to what they want. So until, so it's a, we're stuck between a rock and a hard spot, because they say, okay, you need tests, but there's no test to be had anywhere, not, not the, not one that tests for COVID and not one that tests for the antibodies. Of course, us locals are here stuck. And, and people are calling and saying, we want to reopen. And that's why you have all these protests in other states where they're frustrated. They're going cabin, you know, cabin fever is rampant and they want to reopen.
I spoke to a, to a very nice lady this morning. Yes, actually, that was this afternoon, Lynn. Before you get angry. Sorry. Okay. I spoke to this lady, and she owns a, a dog grooming business. And her position and the positions of her clients is this is a, a health issue for pets. And I don't know that we have any, if that, if there's any sunlight in one of the provisions to give her the ability to, to do it. But the follow-up to that is, if we're going to have citizens that are going to say, yeah, I'm going to open anyway. And if someone decides that, and they're going to, they'll wear a mask, you bring your pet in, you drop it off, you don't stay, it's one person in, one person out. They do the best they can to meet the spirit of the COVID precautions. What, what are we going to do? This is going to happen. I'm sure we've already thought of it. And there's going to be nice people who want to do the right thing by their clients, by themselves. They want to help animals. What, have we thought this through at all?
Yes. And, okay, specifically on the pet grooming, that, that is one of the most frequent calls we get. And early on, the order, it really wasn't included in the order. The, the governor changed the order, added another line that is ambiguous as to, it doesn't come out and say whether pet grooming is. It says animal care and veterinary and necessities of life and other care. Or other care and necessities of life. And we interpreted that as a city, and most cities did, that what they were referring to in care of animals was the care of the animals in the pet adoption center or something like that. That that's the routine care they're talking about, is keeping them alive, necessities of life. Recently, another city in the valley has made the determination that, no, they, you know, pet grooming is allowable. The other thing that weighed into our decision, saying, no, we were, we were looking at this ambiguity, and we had a call into the state, was that it seemed as if, okay, if human grooming wasn't essential, it was a harder case to make for pet grooming being essential. So we had been taking the case of no. Once Icelia made their call, we actually got a hold of the state, talked to them today. And, and I don't, I don't mean to throw the state under the bus on this or anything, because I know they are busy and understaffed and all of that. But they basically said, yeah, that's ambiguous. That's pretty ambiguous, why don't you call your county and see what they say?
You know, I think there's a difference, though, because when you go to the barber or to the hairdresser, they're not taking lice and ticks and things. So I, I think-
Right, that would, that would count under the, positively the veterinary care. But a, a, at any rate, so staff's kind of in a tough position on this. And when it comes to how are we going to enforce it, that's even a tougher position. Because, again, this, this is not our order. And, and normally, we don't even enforce these types of orders. Normally, public health orders are enforced by the public health departments. But this is an emergency, this is a different situation. We have to be very careful to try to be consistent, because, one, it opens, it's the right thing to do. We, we don't want, if, if we allow somebody that says, I'm going to break the rules, but do it responsibly, to go ahead and open, what message does that seem, send to the people that say, yeah, I'm going to abide by the rules and close my shop? So we have to be very careful of that, both from the right thing perspective, but also from a liability standpoint. If we get to the point where we are making choices outside a very rational interpretation of the rules, then we open ourselves up to some liability. We have talked about this. Again, we have not, our administrative process, administrative citation process includes everything from a written warning to a, a penalty, a monetary penalty. We have never even gotten to the written warning stage yet. We have talked about, how do we handle this at some point? In the current situation, it's, it's a challenge. Do we just send a written warning and leave it at that? It's going to become more challenging when we start this incremental reopening. I, I am certainly not going to ask our officers to be walking around department stores, making sure, you know, the tape measure, making sure people are six feet apart, or making sure that they have the right splash guards in front of the cashiers, all, all those measures. We just, the public health departments aren't staffed to- We just, the public health departments aren't staffed to enforce them and we certainly aren't. So, yeah, we've been thinking a lot about this, where we go with that. But I think wherever we do go, we have to be kind of consistent across the board, both from the fairness aspect, but also from protecting the city from any potential liability, from unfairly applying an order.
I mean, I can, it's a slippery slope. It's good for pets. It's not good for me. I have an ingrown nail and I want to go to my, the person doing my pedicures. It just opens, and I do get pedicures. It does open up a whole area where all of a sudden now, we're going to get inundated with requests. We're going to have good people that are going to, they're going to test it because they're getting desperate. They need, a lady sent me an email. She was very concerned about her animal and said that the dog needed to get groomed because of the fleas and ticks. And, you know, this lady I spoke to this morning was very nice. She wants to do the right thing, but she's got to pay her bills. So, I just, we need to be prepared for that. I did have a conversation with the mayor of Madera on Monday or Tuesday. And they want to coordinate their actions with Fresno County and Fresno City and Clovis because everybody's so kind of tied at the hip. And they're going to be talking about it at their meeting. And I told them that I would bring it up. I thought probably League of Cities would probably be a good avenue here, but we're not having League of City meetings. I don't know how we would do it, but obviously, we need, if, when we roll this out, having everybody on the same page or is mostly on the same page would be very helpful. Have you had conversations with any other city managers?
Yes, not on this reopening specifically. Well, I've had conversations with one other on the reopening. But throughout this, we have started, all the city managers in the county have a group email that we're going. And when we adopt a policy, we kind of share it in that way, just a sharing of resources. And we're trying to stay on the same page. Again, and actually, the county is on that as well, county administrative officers on that group. Again, really, I mean, at this point, we're trying to, I'm trying to get, kind of jump-started. To be honest, my first outreach was to the county and the city of Fresno, saying, hey, let's get this going. I'm sure that once we get to that point, the other cities will become involved. And then as far as a regional approach, it would probably be, really, the coordination there would have to happen between the two county public health departments to make sure they're on the same page. Because whatever cities in Madera are going to have to comply with their county health orders and we'll be coordinating with our county health. There's nothing that would prevent those county health departments from coordinating.
Right. Let me see. Jose, I have one more. You brought, you made me remember something I wanted to bring up. So, once everything starts opening, it's going to be opening because we met certain criteria. I think the governor brought up six things. And that means that the disease, COVID-19, is being reduced to a point where it's manageable. And one of the things that helps manage an epidemic is contact tracing. Has, and you said something about, public health requires a lot of people to do the work and they just don't have the work. Have they reached out to the local, to us, to help them with, you know, when they have a known person that is infected, maybe have our local police department help them with the contact tracing? See who, we have great detectives, you know. Huh? Yeah. Can we go and see who that infected person has had contact with? It could be telephonic or stuff. We can do social. Have they reached out to you or to?
Not to my knowledge.
No? I mean, the training required is like minimal for law enforcement. We do it all the time. That's how we, the gum shoes, you know, we, in law enforcement, that's what you do. You find witnesses of who witnessed what and you go on and you get names and take them down and see who might be involved in a crime. This is just who might have been exposed to this thing. Because if you don't have contact tracing later on, once we manage this, it's going to blow up again. So, public health hasn't done that with us.
No, they haven't. And to be completely honest, and the chief can chime in if he disagrees with me, you know, our resources are spread thin too. Telephonic, maybe. The last thing I want to do is send some of the most critical people in the city out to COVID-infected people to talk to them.
I would say telephonic. If you had light duty people that could start making calls.
That would be something an option, but we just haven't-
Maybe one or two people you might have that could do something like that.
In Madera County, they have used their, because it's a county health problem, not a city problem. So, what they found in Madera County is they've used their DA investigators, their probation investigators, so county level employees that can, so they've had, much smaller county, but they've had really remarkably good luck. But they've made, like, their first two patients, they contacted 143 people. So, it's not an easy task. It's not like if you call six people. So, it just took a long time to get to this. But they've done a good job in Madera in that regard. So, there may be some county, you know, staff that could help as well if we got into that business of tracing.
Lynn and I spoke earlier and we were, I didn't know where to put this in.
When I was nicer.
[laughing]
You should have taken it then.
It was, either bring it up now or during council comments. One of my concerns is that the state government is going to use this emergency as an opportunity to put through some policies that they've been wanting to use, like no cash bail. Well, that's happened through the judicial council. We released 400 people from jail. Right after I spoke last Monday and said, you know, I wouldn't get out too far on Wednesday, I sent a letter to the governor. And the reason I sent a letter to the governor was because a proposal had been made by an assembly person to stop the sale of guns and ammunition in the state of California. And my concern was that that would be another opening for this administration, this state administration, to take another action under the provisions of the emergency order. So, I sent a letter as an individual council member to the governor. And Lynn and I were discussing it and she wanted to take a different position. Lynn, go ahead.
It's a discussion we had several years ago about using city letterhead. And so, for me, the headline was about Clovis, Clovis mayor. No one reads the fine print that it was from your desk. I just, to me, after you said, I'm not going to go out there without asking the council, like, the ink was dry. And so, I had called people saying, well, wait, I think Clovis should shut the gun. So, it becomes about the guns and that's not the point. I don't care about the issue. So, I just, for me, I was uncomfortable that the letter was portrayed as the city of Clovis took a stand on, we shouldn't close, that gun shops should be essential businesses, when that wasn't an issue here. I felt like your letter got kind of mixed up. I'm writing, but I'm speaking on the citizens of Clovis. So, you can't have it both ways in the letter. You're a police chief. You could write it in your own, you have a ton of standing that way. But we had never talked about it. Now, you guys might think it's right. I don't know, but we never talked about that. So, that was just my, I just think that's the thing I was most afraid of, was when we take individual positions, no one reads past the logo. That's all. I just, I was uncomfortable with that. I was uncomfortable with the press. I was uncomfortable with the calls I got after that. So, I just think we should, you know, you said you wouldn't do that and I appreciated that. And I think I was a little bit like, well, wait, didn't he just say what they're going to do?
Didn't he just say that?
So, I was a little confused by that. So, it isn't about the issue. I don't care what the issue is. It's just the principle of the letterhead made it look like we had taken a position on that and we had not.
Right. I understand your point. Anybody else want to? I had thought when we discussed letterhead and what you created for us, John, was that we were able to do this because it was from the desk of. And so, that, you know, so that would mean, you know, I cannot write a letter of recommendation. I can write a letter to whatever because of that. And so, I thought we discussed and agreed as a council that that, if it's on that letterhead that I saw the mayor write on, it did state that. Now, we can have the discussion again and go, let's change all that. But I thought we had the authority. That's why it didn't bother me. People will always interpret something just because I speak. They'll always take it as a council member of the city of Clovis speaking. That comes with who we are and what we are and so. But I thought that was settled when we did that, when you bought us those cardboard sheets, not cardboard sheets, but those stock, you know, the harder cards that we can use now in the letterhead that we can use. And so, that's what I thought. And that was the context that I had put that out. And I was pretty clear that I was making a comment as a single elected official and as a law enforcement chief. But I understand your position. Anybody else wish to jump in on this? Okay. Any other questions for Luke on the workshop items or any other discussion on workshop items? Seeing none, we will go to city manager comments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
We do have one public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a, Carrie, will you unmute Mr. Jacob Ulum? Jacob, this is John Holt from the city of Clovis.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
We're open public comment for item number 10. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. My time is limited. So, first, I want to thank you all for your leadership during this very extraordinary time, extraordinary circumstances to demand sound leadership. And in my opinion, you have all met that mark. I want to give a special thanks to Mayor Besenzer for your letter to Gavin Newsom in regards to the gun grab many progressive legislators I'm sure were hoping for, first proposed by Miguel Santiago, Assembly Member of the 53rd District. I've heard in the discussion, people talking to how the letter was received by some. However, I think you were absolutely right when you reminded the governor that we have an absolute right to defend our family property and loved ones. So, I thank you for that. And I was very proud of that letter. Second point, there's been much talk about reopening businesses and our society in general. And I wanted to speak, to urge you all, the council, to begin that process now. I want to underscore the word process though, because it certainly will be a slow and gradual type of release back to the life we were living five to six weeks ago. But people need to get back to work and I don't need to tell you that. But now is the time to have that conversation. The existence of this workshop indicates Clovis is already taking steps in that direction and I'm very happy for that. However, and this is kind of the premise for my comments or my desire to feel like I wanted to speak today, this idea is already becoming kind of political in nature and as time goes on, it will only continue to do so. I just want to urge a local and balanced interpretation of this process, not one fueled by fear. Certainly, caution and a careful hand is advised, but this is not turning out to be initially what we thought. So, you guys have done a great job and I just want to thank you for that.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments, John?
Yes, sir.
I will close public comments on item 10. City manager comments. Luke?
I got nothing.
Council comments. Mr. Whalen?
Nothing.
Ms. Ashbeck? Lynn? Jose? Hey, last week, I talked about, I was talking about a town in New Jersey called Lakewood. And last Monday, they had 897 cases. They now have 1,330 and 50 deaths. It's, I'm sorry? 108,000. And, but, and there's some differences. I don't sit next to a city of 500,000, but it's, the numbers just keep getting worse. And part of the issue there was a kind of a resistance on the part of a large segment of the community to social distancing at weddings, funerals, a lot of things to the point where police arrested people. It has been, it has gotten worse and worse. In my hometown of 15,000 people, they have 103 cases. So, it's, New Jersey's being hit hard. So, when people want to paint a, everything is good, we should just go back to business as normal, there's something to be said for timeout, let's be a little cautious. Anyway, Lynn, go ahead.
One comment to that. Andy, I don't know if you've been in touch with the nursing homes in Clovis, but that might be a special outreach if you haven't been in touch. Just given the horrifying statistics across the country. So, I called the gal today to just ask what they needed for PPE in my day job, but it might be that, I don't know if you've been in touch, but it just makes me think that's, I don't think the ones in Clovis are particularly hard hit, but it might be an outreach if we haven't made that. We could maybe rally to help them out if they needed some help. Just a thought, because their track record's terrible.
Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead, Andy.
Early on, our fire department took the lead on that and has been sending out guidance and letters to those facilities to provide them any assistance they need to control that.
Well, if you find out they need any like PPE or something, let us know.
It's a partnership with them.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then we will adjourn the meeting.